Good evening, fellow residents. I understand we have a quorum, so we will begin or reconvene our town meeting that began last night, May 13th. Please all rise and join me, and gentlemen, remove your caps and the pledge of allegiance. Yeah. It's in spirit, it's here.
Wow.
Pardon my back.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here. I am told that at times I have not done a great or as good a job as I could at announcing the articles that are before the town, so I will do my best to repeat them once they're echoed here. So, we will begin right away with the lottery for the remaining 30 or so articles we need to deal with.
Article 22.
Article 22.
I move that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $5,000 to equipped one animal control vehicle with miscellaneous police animal control equipment to be used by the animal control officer.
It's been moved and seconded, the recommendation of Article 22 of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends.
Our chief will explain the article.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, everyone. Chief Shavz. Basically, it's $5,000. Is this on?
Nope.
Oh.
Good evening, everyone. $5,000 to retrofit 2017 Ford Explorer for a 2011 Crown Ford Vic that the ACO is currently utilizing. It's a very old vehicle, I believe it was Chief Broderick's old sergeant's car. The mileage, we don't know what the mileage is, the last time we checked the mileage was 102,222, that was about two years ago. The retrofit will include a modified enclosure with partitions to meet the needs of the ACO when she collects animals, so the animals are not together. Includes the removing of the striping and re-stripping the cruiser reflect animal control, any labor to take care of that, retrofitting.
Thank you. Any debate or discussion on Article 22? Seeing none, all in favor of passing Article 22, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
15.
Article 15.
I'll move it while he looks. I move that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $150,000 for maintenance of town roads.
It's been moved and seconded, Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 15?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends.
This is something we get to work on the roads every year from the town.
Any discussion or debate on Article 15? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 15, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 15 passes unanimously.
49.
Article 49. Good evening.
Hi. Undesignated funds, right? Okay. Okay, thank you. I move that the town, oh, Jean Galant, Library Director. I move that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $2,345 towards the purchase of five computers, and it should be one printer for the use in the library. Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded, Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 15?
The Finance Committee recommends.
So, as was recommended by the Finance Committee, the library requests funding for computer technology upgrades in a regular rotation each year. These requests ensure that both the staff and the patron computers are up to date. The library has a total of 18 computers that are in daily use. Of those, 10 are still running on Windows 7, so this request is to replace five of those computers with new computers on a Windows 10 operating system. Thank you.
Thank you. Any need for discussion or debate? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 49, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 49 passes unanimously.
Article 59. Five nine.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over this article.
It's been moved and seconded to pass over Article 59, Finance Committee's recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends pass over.
By way of explanation, this is a parcel on Eldana Road that the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife wanted to purchase from the town, but upon title examination, it appears that the original deed read to the town of Halifax and the residents of the, excuse me, the inhabitants of Plymouth County. So Plymouth County now wants to share in this sale. So we have to figure out some kind of a formula to make it happen, if in fact we still want to make it happen, but in the meantime, we want to pass over this article until we can figure out what to do with it.
Any need for discussion or debate on passing over Article 59? All those in favor of passing over Article 49, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously to pass over Article 59.
Fifty. Five zero.
Article 50.
Mr. Moderator, I move to table Article 50 until we've voted all the other articles because it has to do with undesignated funds.
There's been a motion to end a second to table Article 50. Do you want to explain? Or I should, actually, this will sound strange, but I need a recommendation, the Finance Committee is?
Oh, the Finance Committee recommends tabling until after all the other articles have been voted. The reason we want to do this is because we have to fill in an amount, and that will be whatever's left over from any other articles that draw from the undesignated fund balance. So what this will do is decide what will go into our stabilization fund, but we have to vote all the other articles that deal with that pool of money first before we know how much we would move into the stabilization fund at the end of the day.
Thank you. Yes.
That's a two-thirds vote.
Okay, this is also a two-thirds vote, as I understand it. Is there any discussion or debate on the move to table Article 50? Okay, all those in favor of tabling Article 50, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, which means we met the requirement for the two-thirds vote, so Article 50 is tabled.
Article six.
Article six.
Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $75,000 to the reserve fund to cover extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures during fiscal year 2020 in accordance with Chapter 40, Section 6 of the Massachusetts General Laws, and to transfer Water Department retained earnings, the sum of $50,000, to the Water Department Reserve Fund.
Article six has been moved and seconded, recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Explain.
What this article will do is fund our reserve fund, which as the statement mentions, is for any unforeseen expenses that occur during the year, so anything that we don't know about that arises, the reserve fund allows a kind of savings account for the Finance Committee to approve or deny requests to transfer money from there. There's also a separate one for water, a reserve account for water that comes out of water retained earnings for any unforeseen expenses that the Water Department makes us notified of.
Thank you. Any need for discussion or debate? Seeing none, all those in favor of passing Article six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article six passes unanimously.
Thirty. Article thirty.
Article thirty.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $200 for the installation and operation of a new street light on pole number one.
Nope.
Oh, wrong article.
I'm sorry, I was on 29. Mr. Moderator, I'm going to do this again. I move that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $3,500 to support South Coastal County's Legal Services, Inc., should be incorporated, but continued free legal service in civil matters to elders, low-income families, and their children.
Mr. Moderator? Wait, Article 30 has been moved and seconded, Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 30?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Mr. Moderator, this is an article that has been on the town warrant for many, many years, most of the 45 years I've been in town. It's a good cause, it does provide some help for, exactly as it says, elders, low-income families, and their children, and I think it's a generous thing for the town to do.
Any need for discussion or debate on Article 30? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 30, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 30 passes unanimously.
Article 52.
Article 52.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to move Article 52 as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved, we need a second? Moved and seconded?
Our town administrator will explain this article.
Yep, hold on, I need a recommendation of Finance Committee, correct?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Recommendation, thank you.
While our bylaws had a fine system that was different than the state statute that requires a $50 fine for violations of the various state statutes that are incorporated into our town bylaws, what this language does is bring us into compliance with the state statutes.
Any need for a discussion or debate on Article 52? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 52, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Passes, majority rule. Article 52.
Article 57.
This is, this is, yeah, this article cannot be acted on at town meeting because a prerequisite hearing has not been conducted, so there is no way for us to act on this article, we need to move on to the next article.
Article 56.
Article 56. Same, is that correct? For the same reason, we cannot act on Article 56 because a prerequisite hearing by the planning board has not been conducted.
Article nine.
Article nine. Mr. Garen?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $18,919 to fund the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement for fiscal year 2020 between mass COP cops and local 459 sergeants in the town of Halifax.
Article nine has been moved and seconded, the Finance Committee's recommendation on Article nine?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends.
This is basically, we've negotiated in good faith with the sergeants of the police department, and this is the outcome of our negotiation over the last few months, and it's a fair one to the town as well as to the officers.
Any need for discussion or debate? Seeing none, all those in favor of passing Article nine, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article nine passes unanimously.
Article 26.
Article 26.
I move that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $21,800 to purchase four ICP tabulator bundles, voting machines or equivalent.
It's been moved and seconded, the Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 21?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends.
I'm requesting new machines because the ones that the town currently has are about 20 years old. The election last November, we had a couple of issues, and fortunately, we had an extra tabulator, so we were able to work through them. The machines that we currently have are obsolete, and there are no parts except from older machines that other towns have turned in. So the state has certified two companies that we can choose from, and we've chosen this company up in New Hampshire, and their service is great, we currently use them for the machines we have.
Any need for discussion or debate on Article 26? Yes, sir.
Alex Mead, 302 South Street, quick question. So these are the machines that we slide our ballots into?
Correct.
Isn't there one per precinct?
Correct. So now with early voting, those of you, when you come into the polls, I have to stop the line in order to put the early voting ballots in, because they have to be voted on Election Day at a polling place. So we'll have one machine now that will handle strictly the early voting. And at the last presidential, we had about 1,200, so that took a lot of time, so this way, they'll be set aside, totally separate, I won't have to stop the line, and then the fourth one will be an extra in the emergency, that one of them breaks down.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other need for discussion? Yes, sir.
Yes. I understand you said one-
You want to please identify yourself?
Jeff Bolger, Brandeis Circle. I know in a number of the other departments that we have phased in this type of equipment that needs to be replaced over a period of years. I mean, I understand your comment about these being old and you have to, but if you've got four of them, that gives you sufficient parts to at least keep two of them in operation. I don't know why this year we have to buy all four. Why don't we just buy two?
We currently have two machines that are growing older and older, and we had some troubles the last time. So there will be two, one for each precinct, the third one will be for the early voting, and it will be used at the polls, and the fourth would be in the event of an emergency. So it was just the smartest move I thought at the time, and I still think that. It will make it easier for the voters and for the staff.
Other discussion or debate? All those in favor of Article 26, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Passes by majority.
Article 60.
Article 60. Article 60 cannot be acted on for the same reason stated earlier, that there hasn't been a prerequisite hearing by the planning board.
Article 53.
Article 53.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article 53.
It's been moved and seconded to pass over Article 53, the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends pass over.
Finance Committee recommends the pass over of Article 53. Mr. Milias?
Mr. Moderator, this is a solar pilot agreement. Pilot stands for payment in lieu of taxes. The Board of Assessors has tried to negotiate with this particular company for several months. We've been through a lot of sessions, and we still have some distance between us, and we would prefer to bring this to town meeting at a later date when we've had an opportunity to strike a better arrangement with the solar company.
Any need for discussion or debate on Article 53? Seeing none, all those in favor of passing over Article 53, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 53 is passed over.
Article fifty, excuse me, 58. Five eight.
Article 58. Okay, we cannot act on Article 58 because again, the planning board has not held a prerequisite hearing.
Article 54.
We cannot act on Article 54 for the stated reason that the planning board has not had its prerequisite hearing.
Article 34.
Article 34.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $75,000 for a network cabling refresh in the town's municipal buildings.
Article 34 has been moved and seconded, the Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 34?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends Article 34.
We've been doing the upgrades, obviously, as you've been going to town meetings, of our various computer systems and networks and such during the last couple of years. This piece of the puzzle is the actual cabling of the buildings that connect the computers and other IT equipment to the central hubs, the servers and such inside those buildings and to the outside, out into the world wide web and the internet. The cabling, for instance, in the town hall was put in about 2,000, and we've, obviously, there's been a serious change in technology since then in terms of upgrades and such, and over the course of time, it slowly deteriorates, even electrons eventually do a little bit of wear and tear on a system. So we're requesting the network upgrades for those reasons.
Thank you, Mr. Seeling. Any discussion or debate on Article 34? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 34, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Article 61.
Article 61. Article 61 cannot be acted on because there has not been a prerequisite hearing from the planning board.
Article eight.
Article eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $14,745 to fund the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement for fiscal year 2020 between AFSCME, AFVL-CIO, Union Council 93, Local 1700, Highway Cemetery, and the town of Halifax.
Have a motion and a second on Article eight, the recommendation of the Finance Committee on Article eight?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends Article eight.
Mr. Moderator, this is typical of union negotiations, we negotiated for a couple of months. In my opinion, we came up with a fair and equitable agreement between the town and the union. Very seldom do both sides walk away feeling okay. This time, we walked away feeling pretty good, and we think we did something fair for the highway workers.
Any need for discussion on Article eight? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article eight passes unanimously.
Article 14.
Article 14.
I move to pass over.
It's been moved and seconded to pass over Article 14, Finance Committee's recommendation on passing over Article 14?
The Finance Committee recommends to pass over.
We haven't received an amount yet from the state.
Any need for discussion on Article 14? Seeing none, all those in favor of passing over Article 14, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimously passing over Article 14.
51.
Article 51.
Mr. Moderator, I would move Article 51 as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded, Article 51, the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
I also wanted to ask before I explain the article if we could, our committee met with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health to answer questions, and so I would like to ask if we could get a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen, if they've taken a position on this article?
Yes, Mrs. Sniffin, the Board of Selectmen has unanimously supported this article.
Thank you. And I'm not sure if there's someone here from the Board of Health, if they have taken a position.
Alan Dear, Snow Street, the Board of Health has recommended this article.
The Beautification Committee has proposed this article because we believe that it's necessary and that it's the right thing to do. Clearly, there is no denying the damage that single-use plastics are doing to the environment, to our wildlife, to marine life, to our oceans, and even to the food we eat. Although we see plastic bags hanging from trees along our highways, or blown into shrubbery, or up against fences along our local streets and roads, the trash issue is not our reason for proposing this action, but it is real. If town meeting passes this article, Halifax will join 112 other Massachusetts cities and towns, including every town on the Cape and Islands, and several states and countries in eliminating the retail distribution of single-use plastic bags. 50% of the state of Massachusetts now lives, the population 50%, lives in a community where plastic- community where plastic bags are not distributed in retail locations. This article is not new or trend-setting. Bangladesh banned them in 2002. Nantucket has banned them since 1990. Retailers are also beginning to acknowledge the need to change. Trader Joe's, Big Y, and Krogers have announced that they are phasing out the distribution of these bags. Others will undoubtedly follow. When we spoke to a manager of the Halifax Stop &amp; Shop, she told us that when they learned this article was on the warrant, they decided to encourage their patrons to use reusable bags, and they have ordered a supply. They will be selling the bags for $1. Fifty percent of the proceeds will be donated to a local charity. The first month, the monies will go to HOPS, later to the Council on Aging and the elementary school. They are looking to hear from interested nonprofit local organizations. We are not recommending a change back to paper bags, although paper is recyclable and does biodegrade. The reasons that led us from paper to plastic still exist. We have, however, learned much through research and experience. More than 85% of all plastic produced in the past 60 years has not been recycled. It is still with us, does not biodegrade, and we add more daily. The Beautification Committee recommends reusable bags as defined in the article. From personal experience, and four of us are senior citizens, we have found that these bags hold more, they don't tear, they're easier to carry, they're machine washable, and they're far more environment-friendly. Our committee has distributed free reusable bags over the past two years, and Mutual Bank recently donated 100 to support our effort. We have heard concerns about adding new or more regulations. We understand this, and we agree that overregulation can be a legitimate concern. Sometimes, however, after targeted research, careful consideration, and respectful discussion, good regulations are important and necessary to protect our health and welfare and to protect the environment for the greater good. Seatbelt and cellphone laws, DDT and other pesticide regulations, and the cleanup of Boston Harbor are examples of this. We believe the documented problems of plastic justify the need to regulate here. And I would just like to make one other point clear. This article addresses retail distribution. It does not address personal use of plastic bags. It does not place any restrictions on people's personal freedoms, strictly reduces the amount of plastic bags in our environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Niffen. Any need for discussion or debate? Yes, please.
Jeff Bolger, Brandeis Circle. I hope most of you here tonight have had an opportunity to read the handout that I've left on the table earlier this evening citing 26 Reasons Why Banning Plastic Bags Is Wrong. The committee refers to reusable bags. Do you know that most of those bags are made in China and quite often contain toxic chemicals that are not allowed to be used in manufactured products in this United States? Reusable bags are also much more expensive, and if used to carry food, must be washed regularly. They've been found to contain obese sources of bacteria, yeast, mold. Plastic bags, contrary to what was passed out, are not single-use bags. Most people use them for multiple things: waste basket liners, garbage bags. I use them for picking up dog waste when I'm walking my dog. Plastic bags are cheaper, more convenient, and stronger than paper. I know the Beautification Committee has tried to dodge the issue of paper bags, but that's what most of these stores go for as an alternative. You find that the past paper bags are very weak. Ace Hardware up in Pembroke, Pembroke passed this. I bought some stuff up there. I walked out the door and the bag ripped. And believe it or not, paper bags actually have a larger carbon footprint than plastic. The cost and manufacture, moving it, is greater, far greater. Paper bags take up more space in waste, in landfills, than plastic does. I guess, in ending, I would say, this isn't Brookline in Cambridge. And if you pass this, I, just think about it, what's going to be next? They're going to ban bottled water, plastic straws, sugary drinks?
Mr. Bolger, would you direct your, I'm sorry, would you direct your comments here?
Sugary drinks. Just today, it turned out, my wife told me that Cambridge is now considering banning plastic silverware. So, this is the new world for you people, and I hope you vote to protect your rights and your freedoms of choice.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Len Tassino, I was the one dissenting vote from FinCom. I'm not going to debate the merits of reducing plastic. I'm just going to debate the use of a ban to do it. So, in my opinion, a ban is a pretty serious thing to do. It should be, again, in my opinion, the final step that we take. So, the Beautification Committee was nice enough to come in and give the presentation, and it was encouraging for me to hear that they have been proactive to reach out into the few towns, the few stores that are actually in the town, to work with them to reduce their plastic use. For me, it's a better lesson for our kids and grandkids that we came together as a small community to educate the residents, to work with the businesses instead of, you know, coming to a meeting and saying aye for an article. I use HOPS as the example to see what they did. I'm sure that they could have filled out a petition and had enough people to come and demand that we use the government to build the playground, but they didn't. And so, to see it over there is encouraging. And I just wish we, in today's world of instant gratification, we didn't use this as one of our first resorts, but rather, we used it as a last.
Thank you.
Hi, Dawn Corby, Mustafel Lane. Look, and I think we can all agree that you can't keep kicking this can down the road. Our environment is suffering, and all you need is to have all the children that go to this school come here tonight and speak on this because they're more educated about it than any of us. And as far as, you know, losing all of our rights, if you want to live on this planet, your rights aren't going to matter if it's unsustainable. And that's the bottom line. And as far as picking up dog feces, I'm a dog trainer, so, you know, that's my world. And there are biodegradable bags that you can use because when you use those shopping bags, what do you do with them then? You throw them away, and they don't biodegrade. Okay? So, bottled water is banned in my house because my daughter enforced it with my husband. So, he lost that argument. So, I have reusable bags. I bought them at Walmart probably four years ago, and they stand up nice and tall. And they're strong, they haven't ripped. I'm tired of seeing plastic bags in trees, and I think we all know that when it first happened, it was going to be a disaster, and here we go. Because our wildlife, our marine life are suffering the most for it, and that's not fair. So, I encourage you all, our children are going to have this planet, and they don't have to continue to pick up after us. I think we should start learning from our children, from the things our teachers are teaching them. This is today's world, and we are here because of the old ways and kicking this can down the road. And not all the old ways have been the best ways. I think we can all agree to that. So, I think it's time that we take a stand, and you know what? This isn't Brookline, but it could be. And, you know, maybe we don't have the money that the people in Brookline have, but that doesn't mean we can't keep our town clean, and we can't protect our environment. So, I encourage you to please all vote for this. The time is now.
Other, yes, please. I'm sorry. Either one of you, I'm sorry.
I just want to say that this is not an article designed or patterned after Brookline. Pembroke does not distribute plastic bags in their retail establishments. Duxbury, Marshfield, Hingham, Hall approved it unanimously a couple of weeks ago, and their presentation was done by two high school students. This is, this is an article that is necessary. It's not an elite article. The other thing I would say is I think it's important to look at sources, and our committee would be happy to sit down with anyone who's interested to know what our sources of information have been. We have read studies. We have worked closely with the Massachusetts Green Network and with Keep Massachusetts Beautiful. I did not see the prior speaker's handout. Maybe it's the one that was here last night. There was one here. I went online. I couldn't find out anything about the sources. And I think we have to be careful in this day of Internet activity that we validate our sources before we share information.
Thank you, Mrs. Niffen. I'm sorry, ma'am.
Kimberly King, Plymouth Street. I'd like to thank the Beautification Committee for all their hard work. I don't have a necessary stance on the objective of the article. I can speak as a commercial fisherman's daughter and an avid boater that there's more plastic tampon dispensers in the ocean than there are plastic bags, but I'll leave it at that. My concern is, I spoke to the chair about enforcement, Section 4. My question was, the highway surveyor, and how is it to be legal? She told me because he was an elected official, this was possible. I then informed her that I'd call the Attorney General, which I did. I spoke to him twice. They disagreed under the MGL Section 40, Section 21D, that that would be possible. And then I called Chief Shaves, and I also asked him, how would our highway surveyor be able to enforce this article as written? And he was unsure how he'd be able to enforce it and write fines and things. So, my concern is with enforcement, enforcement only, because we don't have, to my knowledge, a bylaw on the books that would grant the highway surveyor permission. And if we need to do it, shouldn't we do that by law first before we pass this article?
Let's see if we can get an answer for you. Hang on. You want to answer that question, Mrs. Niffen?
Obviously, we were not privy to the previous speaker's discussions with the Attorney General or the Police Chief or anyone else regarding this article. We did receive an email from her, to which I replied, and which ended by thanking her for her questions and encouraging her to feel free to contact us again if she had any further questions or concerns. So, I guess we were a little blindsided by this. My understanding from the years I served on the Finance Committee and as a selectman here in Halifax, and that was a little while ago, and I know things can change, so I would hope that anyone who knows more will jump up and correct me if I am wrong. But my understanding is that articles are reviewed by council before they're even placed on the warrant. Apparently, council had no problem with this article. Also, all actions that we take at town meeting, my understanding is, are required to be certified by the Attorney General before they are official. The enforcement agent for bylaws, my understanding is determined by town meeting vote. In this case, we are recommending the highway surveyor serve as enforcement agent because he oversees the recycling department, and we have had excellent collaboration with and help from that department, and he's also willing to do it. I will also tell you that through our research, we have not been able to find any town that has passed this bylaw that has had any issues with enforcement. Businesses comply. This measure has passed in 112 cities and towns. The Attorney General, to our knowledge, has not disallowed any of them. Finally, I call your attention to Section 5 of the article regarding severability. If the enforcement section or any other section of this article is disallowed by the Attorney General, the rest of the article would remain in effect. I hope that helps.
Thank you, Mrs. Niffen. Yes, ma'am.
My second part, when I emailed the Beautification Committee, was financial cost. Will there be an increase in need to the recycling center? Will there be a need for more? He's extremely busy as it is. The highway department has great needs, as is. And I understand the Attorney General did pass and had no other issues with all the other cities and towns. That's because they were written, enforcement being under the Board of Health where it belongs. If we're going to vote this, because I don't have a problem with the objective of it, I'd recommend that we amend the article that the enforcement fall underneath the Board of Health and the Health Agent where she is already considered law enforcement. She can write the fines. She has the knowledge. She can do it. Other than, in my personal opinion, burdening the highway department with one more thing and a potential increase in cost, which is going to ultimately affect us taxpayers.
If I understood your question, did you want the highway supervisor, surveyor, to answer your questions about feasibility of enforcement? Did I hear that correctly?
No, my feasibility, I already received those answers, and I shared those. And we don't understand, most cities and towns, it falls under the Board of Health. I'd ask that we possibly amend the article that enforcement be under the Board of Health. And if we were going to leave it with the highway surveyor, how is this going to cost us, is the town? We don't know that. You know, you can never say, there's never going to be an issue.
Mrs. Niffen, did you want to answer that?
Mr. Moderator, this was a question that we had as well. In our research, we have found that some towns, many towns have their enforcement agent as the Board of Health, and we did speak with the Board of Health. They shared some concerns, not with the article, but with their responsibilities and their time in terms of serving as an enforcement agent. Before we ever put this article forward, we spoke with the highway surveyor because we, as I said, we've been working with him, and he was readily willing to take this assignment. He and we don't anticipate any additional costs in this article, and I believe when I spoke to the Finance Committee, we, I mentioned that because we are not anticipating, we have spoken to several local businesses, we're not anticipating any problems. Never say never, absolutely, but we're not looking at increased help. I'll also tell you that we found towns where the enforcement agent is the town administrator, where the enforcement agent is the building inspector, the Board of Health, the recycling committee. Board of Health is probably in more towns than any other, but there are a lot of different options. It's up to the town meeting to vote for the enforcement agent of this article.
Thank you, Mrs. Niffen. Additional questions, comments? Mrs. Roy?
We're talking about ours, but Mrs. Niffen, could you please answer, is your experience with the other communities that people don't follow the rules?
No, but don't forget, we're not talking about residents. We're talking about businesses. And my, our experience and our research, and we've talked to several towns and Mass Green Network and Keep Massachusetts Beautiful, we haven't found one town that has had any problem with enforcement. Most towns, in fact, I haven't found a town that has had to enforce, so I can't even tell you what the problem might be.
Any additional comments? Yes, sir.
Jeff Bolger, Brandeis Circle. I'd just like to point out one thing. In the handout that the Beautification Committee put, they do not refer to any study that has shown these bans to be effective in reducing the bag litter in the streets after these bans. And in fact, I did find one study that in San Francisco, where several years afterwards, they found absolutely no reduction. Because it isn't the normal consumer that goes to the store, it's the kids driving, you know, drink, around drinking nights, throwing out the bags with their nips and everything else. Those, they're still going to get the plastic bags, and they're still going to throw them out. And show me a study where this has actually effectively reduced what you're asking it to do.
Thank you. Mrs. Niffen?
I can dispute the previous speaker in terms of San Francisco. San Francisco was the first city in the United States to completely ban plastic bags back in 2007. I won't bore you with a lot of details, but since 2010, this policy has led to a 72% reduction in plastic bag pollution. I can give you a list. I can give you information on Seattle, Washington, Boston, India, Australia, China, and I cannot stress enough that our committee would be happy to sit down with anyone. Our brochure had limited space. We shared as much information as we could. It's all factual, and we'd be happy to sit down and share our sources with anyone who's interested.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Jean Galan, Cranberry Drive. I just want to say that I'm going to support this article, and thank you to the Beautification Committee for all of their work and for being so prepared with everything. But my question is, on the offenses and the fines, where does that money go? Would that go back to the town?
Trying to get an answer for you. Hang on. You have an answer for where the money for the fines would go?
I think I would defer to the town administrator on this.
Thank you. Mr. Seelig?
As with other violations of the town bylaws, the fine money will go into the general fund and then be available for use by the townspeople as they see fit.
Thank you. Any additional comments? I'm sorry, in the back? Yep.
Sorry, I'll be quick. Jonathan Seelig, Stoneway Road. I don't know if Jim Keegan is here or anybody from the recycling center that could speak to having to deal with these bags on a regular basis. I know from everything I've read and seen, recycle centers really struggle with bags, with these kind of bags. The machines they use now, the bags don't mix, basically. I don't want to speak to them, but I didn't know if we had anybody from recycling. I didn't... I looked around real quick. I didn't see it. Jim was here.
Trying to find a psychic committee, anybody? Yes?
Steve Harrod, Highway Surveyor. I took all our employees up to Avon to show them what happens with the machines from the bags because it just tangles everything up. They spend hours trying to get the bags out of the machines. So I support this 100%.
Thank you. Any additional points? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of Article 51, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Let me try that once more. Because I'm not clear. So all those in favor of the passage of Article 51, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Want to do a standing count?
In the back, you need to sit down, please. All those in favor of Article 51, please stand. Thank you. You may be seated. And those voting no, please stand.
The results of the standing vote on Article 51 is there are 84 and 18 against, so the article passes by majority.